Board meeting to order on Thursday, April 12th at 7:00 PM. With the agenda approval, approval of the minutes of four, five, 18. Warrants, mail, road foreman's monthly board meeting report, more biz grant applications and VTR and senior documents for signatures he's going to present. Public comment period. And then seven under all business hiring committee update, travel for interviews, discussion, benefit discussion and newsletter. And under there also, I want to put C, which is basically, it's just information that we're going to have a meeting on the town plan on April 18th for a work session here in the office at 6:30. And then on May 2nd, we hope to take action on the town plan by the board. So there's two meetings coming up here for the town plan. And then on their new business of 2018, the selectmen appointments has been rescheduled until 4:19.
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion on the agenda? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Approval of the minutes of four, five, 18.
So move.
Get a second.
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Payroll ending eight, 48, 2018 in the amount of $7,092.44. Counts payable ending four, 13, 18 in the amount of $35,376,043, of which $29,998.7 was for the bond payment for the sewer. That's the one. That's the interest on the bond. So accounts payable ending four, 14, 18 in the amount of $3,474.95. What's your pleasure, guys?
Move to approve.
Second. Any discussion on any of them? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We have a report from the town administrative hiring committee minutes. We're going to talk about the hiring committee later on here, so I'll read that. Have a brochure for spring planning and zoning forum on Wednesday, May 23rd, 2018, conference in Rutland. Have a housing forum on four, 18, 18, 5:30, 7:30 PM, Bennington Housing Authority, 22 Willbrook Road, actually Drive in Bennington, Vermont. People wish to attend. We received a check from the insurance company, from the person that hit our guardrails and fed them up. That was the one here on North Powder Road?
Yeah.
And I just said this, but Pownell's like forward Wednesday, April 10th special meeting at 6:30 PM. Selectment will hold a work session for changes for the post-town plan. So that'll happen. That's it. Okay. Then we have the Bennington County Sheriff Office report. Basically, from the period of March 1st to March 30th, had one 9/11 hangup, seven agency assists, one public assist, one burglary, two accidents, property damage only, three agency assists, fire and rescue, one motor vehicle complaint, one bin verification, nine directed patrols all over town, 47 traffic stops all over town and one juvenile problem. There was 20 tickets written, 11 written and verbal warnings in addition to. Okay. That's the mail, folks. Road foreman, bring your chair up.
Don't mean to be rude, guys.
Okay. Right ahead.
Okay. Well, pretty much read my report, other than trying to keep the roads de-iced. We have both backhoes out ditching. We're ditching Brookman Road, Skippery, we're on there right now. We're trying to spot grade, you know, between the raindrops and get like Carpenter Hill with a big nest of holes. Cleaning the trucks, maintenance. Working on getting gravel crushed in a pile. I had actually Bob Basin come down and looked at it. We're going to be kind of tight. We can probably get 4,000 yards out of the pile pretty easy this year. In for time, Bob could come down and crush it in about four weeks. Now, do you want to put it out for bid and then we're looking at probably a couple months to get a crusher in there? Or would you like to, Basin's done it for the last three years.
Let me ask the question, have you heard anything about the contract for gravel?
No.
Purchase?
No. We're still waiting on that, so I, we kind of have to do something.
I'm just thinking if we get, if that's nearby, you're going to bring a crusher in, we're going to crush.
I, well, I'd like to do the sand also, but what, you know, we're kind of, they did have an engineer up there and looked at it. I give his engineer, our engineer's name and number, so we could talk to him, maybe expedite things, but I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know where it's going.
What's the pleasure of the boards?
What I'd like to do, it's $5.65 a yard, which is 20 cents more than last year because of the price of fuel. Would you like to just have Bob come in and do it?
That was fine.
Or do you want to go out to bid? The only reason I kind of like to do that is just time-wise, so.
Let me ask the board. Ronnie, what's your thoughts on this?
It's over a certain amount. Do we have to have it out to bid?
It's more than 10,000.
Well, it's, it's going to be 22, 8.
That's what I mean. I mean, it's, I don't know if that's.
The only thing is.
It's mute point.
We won't have, well, I think we can do that without.
Well, we can't, if it's over 10,000, we have to put it to bid.
We have a policy if we can only.
Yeah, no.
If it has to go out to bid if it's over so much money.
Okay.
So if that's the case, how quick can you get your bid specs written up and we'll run it right away?
Oh, you'd be looking, by the time you do that, and these guys are getting busy now.
We'll give, we'll give, we'll give them two weeks to respond.
You're looking at maybe getting some gravel down in June, July?
We don't know until they bid. We can, we can ask them that we want it quicker. Let's find out.
Well, I already did the one. He's, he's out a month already.
Yeah. Well, he might, he'll probably bid on this.
Well, yeah, he will.
Well, unless, why don't you write the specs that way? That you're looking for a price to do whatever you're talking about, 4,000 yards.
4,000, yeah.
And you're looking for a date of when, when they could be here to do it. Because that'll give us two choices to decide on when we see it.
Yeah.
Based on the critical need.
Yeah.
Just write the specs accordingly.
And, and we could, or, and have it do in two weeks?
Yeah, we can do that.
Yeah.
But then you're looking at a month or two out from there, so.
Yeah, but let's, let's do it.
We may not.
Talk about it, or we can.
We may not have any until the second round, fall round of grading.
Well, if worse comes to worse, we might have to buy it from somebody. If, if you come in here and say that we need gravel and we haven't got it crushed, guess what? We'll have to figure out how to deal with that. But until then, let's get this spec written, get it out and give them two weeks to respond and then we'll move from there.
Okay.
If you think two weeks is too much, we can get, put it out the bid for one week. I don't care as long as you put it out the bid.
Well, we can, we can put it out. I would for two weeks because they like to come and look at it and be really.
And really, it's only, you're only talking, normally we only have two bids.
Two bids, yeah.
Two bids, so I mean.
Yeah.
It's going to be quick.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, but that's, that's the thing to do and we'll go from there.
Okay.
And board in agreement with that?
Yep.
We have three Better Roads grant, grants. Two of them we're using on West Carpenter Hill going down through. That'll be for hydrologically connected segments, all these are.
Yeah.
The Grants and Aid Program, which we'll get, I'm not sure how much we'll get. We got 14, I think, too, last year. So I'm not sure how much we'll get out of that, but that's pretty much a guaranteed. So we'll get down Carpenter Hill and ditch and we have to stone line anything over 5% to 8% grade, which Carpenter Hill is and so is West Carpenter. So they're going to have to be stone lined.
And that's all the way down to the stream, basically?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. We have actually two of them, the culvert inventory, which we've had since I started here. And I just put in for erosion, road erosion inventory, which we have to do also for this municipal road grant, which we got. So what I'm trying to talk them, I think Jim Henderson will do it, is doing both of them at once.
Okay.
I applied for two Class II road grants for black topping, one on South Stream, one on Maple Grove. And I also applied for a structures grant for the second Mount Anthony Culvert.
Okay.
The stone lined culvert.
Yep.
And also while I'm here, I think, did you give Linda, the board a copy of that, the ERP grant for the mulcher?
Yes.
Y'all got a copy of that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Also, we have a grant in for a mulcher.
I'm sorry, may I ask what a mulcher is?
To blow the hay on the, you know, when you get done, you open up the dirt, you seed it and then you blow the hay, the mulch, all over the top of it.
Okay.
It's, just chops up the hay and blows it on the banks.
Mulch to me is my garden, so.
Yeah, yeah. Kind of the same idea.
Okay.
Kind of the same idea. I don't know, Jason showed you guys.
I think we could probably mention that that's something that's going to be required of us, any, any work we do now alongside our roads have to be mulched and seeded within five days.
Anything up to a 5%, 5% to 8%, you have to seed and mulch. Above that, you have to stone line all your ditches. They're making it so anything you open up now, you really have to seed it and mulch it when you're done. We've been using mine. We still will if, but, because I have one myself. Municipal road grant timelines, did you show these guys? Give them a copy of this?
We could make copies of it.
Anybody wants to take a look at that? That's what's coming down the pike. I'm going to get some culverts, actually. I'm getting prices probably five, $6,000 worth. We need 18s, I need some 15s for the Better Roads grants on Carpenter Hill. And we need a 36 incher for Skippery Road, which we're planning on doing about the first week in June. I'll have it posted because we will have to close the road for a day or two, Skippery. So we'll post it online, so the people know.
And they'll have to come around money at any, to get there?
Yeah, yeah.
And as far as the culvert, culverts go, we have that budgeted? We have that money set aside and budgeted?
Yes, yes, we do. Yes, we do.
Do you have any culvert stockpile or you?
We do. I have a bunch of 24 inch. They like you to, when you replace your culverts, if you can, upsize them one size. So if we can in spots, we do go from an 18 to a 24. Driveway culverts are typically 15 inch, so if, we don't do driveway culverts as a rule, but if we're doing these, these grants, we have to put in, when we do it, you know, if we're doing a driveway crossing that's got a bad culvert or needs one, we put them in. The grant pays for it. But we don't, as a rule, do driveway culverts. Talking about the Snake Hill Road project, this is a grant you guys want to look, I'm, I'm going to try for highway and mitigation.
Can you just explain a little bit the difference between this one and the one that we apply?
There is not a lot of difference. There is not a lot of difference. They're both federally funded in part, which means if we do get that grant, by the time we go through, everything has to be, go through procurement, the, right from the engineering to everything, we, we have to get bids on and, and do that. So we're looking at three to four years if we get that grant, by the time we actually put a shovel in the ground. So it will give us time to put together, you know, some of the 20% match. Then you guys have that.
Maybe, maybe you can probably explain it a little better. You want to just go over the timeline just a little bit, like when?
We can.
Like our, how the permit is due this year and then what we're expecting over the next couple of years where we need to be.
Yeah, we have to by July 31st, apply for the NOI, which is a notice of intent. That's going to cost us $640. Next year, we have to apply for the permit. That's going to cost us 2,000 unless the legislature changes the rules on it, it's due to the amount of miles, mileage you have in town, hydrologically segmented or connected, which is any road within 100 feet of a waterway. Wetlands are included, streams, lake, we don't have any lakes, but rivers. By next January, or July, I'm sorry, is a $2,000 one. Unless, you know, like I say, they change, if the legislature changes that, it may cost us $500 less, I think they talked about. So we have to, basically by 2036, which I started in 2016, we have to have all our roads up to power according to that. It's not really a big deal. It just means proper crowning, no grader berms, like I say, stone lined ditches or grass line below 5%. It's practices you kind of should be doing anyhow, I guess. And when they do the erosion inventory, we'll put together a master plan and it'll let us know where the worst spots are, where we can start. Hopefully, we have at least 15% of our roads that are already up to the best management practice.
We have some grant money right now for inventory work.
We do for, for the culvert inventory and the road erosion inventory.
And so when the BCRC's doing.
They're doing both of them. I'm going to try to get them to do both at the same time. And then we have to go for the plan, put together the plan.
And they'll write that?
Yeah, they will, that, maybe 12, 15,000, but we'll put in for a grant. The grants seem to be paying for all this right now to get you through.
Get you started.
We'll, we'll try to do a master erosion.
It'll help you, you better try and do it. If you're newer, I think you'll end up.
Yeah. What I'm going to try for, you can get a stormwater plan put together or you can get a master stormwater plan. So I'm going to try for the master, which will kind of spell out the worst sections so we can start, you know what I mean? And then you have to go online and actually put them in a database when you're done, as you do them.
Yep.
And.
Is it a state database or one that's controlled strictly by the town?
A and R, if you see United D E C.
Yeah, so a state, so they can look at all the roads in the state?
Yeah.
Makes sense.
It's all going to be, yeah, yeah. Yes, it is.
I think in the long run too, here, we're going to be, probably going to do a lot more maintenance on them. The stone lined ditches are only good for.
Six, seven years.
Dig it all out and.
Do it again.
But, you know.
It's expensive stones.
I, I talked actually to some of the guys from the Better Roads, Alan May. Like he said, they start to fill up, dig them out the best you can, clean them out. That's what the stones are there for, basically, to catch the silt and keep it from running. And we did that one up on Man Hill and actually it's worked very well. The culverts are clean as a whistle, there isn't a drop anything. And that was always a bad road. That was always really washed out bad. So.
It's worked out.
Stones are a pain in the neck, there's no kidding around about it, but that's, they want to filter the stormwater before it gets to the waterways.
Yep.
Big on that. Mostly Lake Champlain, I think, more than around here, but. Okay. One thing I wanted to do, they're working on the Powell Town View, the new one, which is what the listers use. I have that in my computer. And what it is, is a GIS based program. So it gives you the map of the town, gives you layers, roads, well, it actually gives you the property owners, the parcels and all that kind of stuff. I use that quite a bit in what I want them to do, they're working on the new program now, is add three layers for me, because we can't add them. I want to add culverts. So you can bring that up and know where, that, that'll be from the 09, we'll update it when we update that again. Wetlands, wetlands would be handy. I just put in a grant for Maple Grove Road out through where it's wet, you guys have been out through there, to show, there, there was a reason I kind of wanted to show that. Went through in hydrologically connected road segments. If anybody looks at, they're all little purple marks on the roads that are hydrologically connected. They're, each segment is about 328 feet long. So get an idea.
And you've already talked to this person that does that and?
Well, I don't, you know, I really don't know. I think Barb took care of that. I wanted to talk to Linda on it, actually. I did send them an email and Jim Henderson talked to him also about adding these three layers. So is that going to be all right? It's $100 a layer, it'll cost us $300.
I'd be working with Jim.
Huh?
I'd be working with Jim Henderson on that.
Well, he don't, he didn't know either and Chuck didn't really know. He said Barb always took care of that.
Yeah, she provided the information.
Yeah, but I.
She was a map maintenance people, probably.
Yep.
Well, I contacted the outfit and told them, and so didn't Jim, that we wanted to add the three layers. So, you know, I don't know if, I don't know who manages that anymore. I guess Barb did, but.
Barb did.
They all told me.
Mostly because it was used by the listers.
They all told me I had to talk to you because you did it now.
I can find out for you though.
Okay, okay. But I do, they're working on it now, they're doing the new one. And I would like to add them three layers. We have one more.
And the board is in agreement to add these three layers? Just so the contractor's doing it, right?
Absolutely, of course.
No problem, right? Okay, just for the record.
Yeah, okay. You guys are good with it?
Yep.
Of course.
Right?
No problem.
Okay, okay.
Perfect.
The bull mower.
We got this in our packets too.
Yeah, I did that.
He did?
You didn't get the bull mower?
You can share mine.
Okay.
We were passing them down and she took hers and Bob took hers.
Oh, I got you. Oh, yeah, we got that.
We talked about that a while ago and I just, I got the bids back in the third April and hanging on to them. Unfortunately, the one for 17,900 or 18,000 is too big for our tractor. That one was out. The dealer told me that it would work on our tractor and I ended up calling the factory on it and the guy said absolutely not. He said, you're a thousand, yeah, you're a thousand pounds too light and we were too light on horsepower. Diamond was the most expensive. I was, I don't know, I was going between the rotary and the bull. I guess what I would recommend is from HP Fairfield, the Tiger for $19,500.
And we're doing this because the current mower has problems, right?
It's whipped. Number one, it's whipped. Number two, it was made, it was a diamond mower, but they didn't make the smaller mowers, so it was made by Orsi, which was an Italian company. They went out of business. Somebody in Canada bought a lot of their parts out. By the time we get the parts here and pay the duty on them, you know, even though the exchange rate might be a little less, it was ridiculous, price wise. So to get, I was thinking about getting a new head and we all talked about that. Probably to go, it was 70 some odd hundred dollars for a new head. It was, you know, kind of ridiculous. So that's, that's up to you guys. I do have, you know, kind of the specs on them and the sales quotes here, if anybody wants to look at them.
So you sent, sent out to a multitude of companies, tell them what you want, it's sort of like a bid process?
We, we put it out to bid. We put it in the papers.
And this is what you got back?
Online and, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You're comfortable with that, with that, with that Tiger unit?
It's the only one that really fits our, you know, no, the, actually the diamond would be good, but you're, it's $6,000 more and I don't think it's worth going that much more.
Okay.
I don't think.
What's the warranties on these specs?
I'm not sure. I will find out, so.
The reason why I say that is that might be the difference between 6,000, if you get one that gives you two years and the other gives you 10.
And the other one gives you, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I just don't know. Especially from the sounds of things, these things break enough that you're, and you're putting parts on them, they're all crap alongside the road.
To be honest with you, my guess is they, none of them have much of a warranty on them.
Just because of the type of work they do?
Sure.
I don't think.
You're going to mow over the rocks.
Yeah, I don't.
Through rebar that people put up next to a tree to say that they're playing it in the road.
On something like this, I don't think warranty's a big issue. Talking pumps, bearings, knives.
What's your pleasure, board? You have a recommendation from your road foreman? Do you wish to take his recommendation or make a different choice?
I wish to take the recommendation of the road foreman who knows what he's talking about.
So you're making, you're making a motion?
I am making a motion.
To buy the Tiger?
Correct.
I will second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
No, not from you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, nays, the ayes have it. There you go. Put that out.
Actually, this is a map of the roads with road segments, if you guys.
Thank you for knowing what you're talking about. And I kind of was able to follow you.
See the purple?
Yeah.
Segments and lines in between them, they're hard to see. They're 328 feet. We have 35 miles of them in the town.
What else you got for us?
Also, we did talk about that before and you give me permission, I may hold back on that till the new budget that was the paving.
At the shop?
Yeah. I may hold back on that and leave that in there for now. Just because.
Okay with me, it's okay with everybody else.
And then with the new budget.
I've seen this on the state when I look at some of them.
We can do that.
So talk.
So talking about budgeting and, and, um, equipment, where are we? Do we have specs closed for our dump truck that we talked about in budget time?
Actually, no, I don't, yeah.
Okay.
Is, is that your guys' pleasure, or do you wanna move forward on that, or...
Well, it sounds to me, I don't know what your time availability is, there certainly is a time when you're gonna start doing a lot of work on the roads, because of mud and so forth, and, uh, it sounds like bid for gravel. You're gonna buy this mower, uh, and you got some green applications?
Mm-hmm, we got a bunch of them out. Some of them are, we, we did get, like I said, we just haven't had the...
Are you looking to buy something similar to what we already did, so the specs for this new truck wouldn't be much different?
Yes.
I think we already, I think Ronnie made a motion, a couple months ago, we supported it.
I made a motion, we go in another tandem, that's what I made, we don't need no winger. No, no, that's, we talked about that, so I can get some specs together, and we can talk about that. Linda, did you wanna look at that, that was a snake kill grant, I don't think you ever got a copy of it, did you? Just for the heck of it, I got, I have it on the computer also.
Thank you, can I keep this one?
Yes, you can, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
But my...
Do we all have a question?
Oh, yeah, well, before we do that, annual documents for signatures, you guys something we're supposed to sign?
Yes, right there, Joe.
Then I'll go to the public, to the public comment.
Okay, yes, these are our state. There you go.
Otherwise, we get going, carried away, forget the subject.
This one, he has to sign on the back, I guess, right?
Yes.
And this, you guys, too.
Okay, can you tell us a little bit about what this is?
That, that was our financial report, um, with the state, um... It kinda gives us a guideline if we need FEMA money, um... It's, we do that every year.
And so basically, it talks about what amount of money we're spending for what type of class of highway?
Yeah.
And, uh, on winter maintenance, non-winter, and so forth.
Yeah, because we have to spend, I think it's three hundred dollars a year.
Okay, okay, what's your pleasure, guys? It's the annual financial plan for the town highways.
Both of us sign.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All of us have to sign this, folks, I'm gonna send it down the line.
This is a road and bridge standards.
Okay, we, the legislative body in this county of town, was certified that we have reviewed, understand, and comply with the town road and bridge standards and public works specifications and standards, passed and adopted by the select board, city council, village board of trustees on today's date, that's what we use it. Okay, April twelfth, two thousand eighteen. We further certified that our adopted standards do, okay, uh, meet or exceed the minimum requirements, including January. We further certify that we do have an up-to-date highway network inventory, which identifies locations, size, deficiencies, condition of roads, bridges, causeways, culverts, highways, et cetera, all for class one, two, three. What's your pleasure, guys?
Both to sign.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
They're just standard floors, we do, every year.
Yeah, every year. Send that down through, sign it, give it to...
And we have the grant agreement for the road erosion grant, that's the only one we got back so far.
Is for the, uh, inventory of the hydrologically connected road segments, is that what this is for, the grant?
Well, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's what we need to do next, we need the culvert, we need the road erosion inventory, and then we can go to our plan, uh, stormwater discharge plan.
And set them out, out of the grant?
Yeah.
Okay, the Better Roads category A, it's seven thousand six hundred and seventy-eight dollars and twenty-seven cents. Uh, we have a match of...
We have a match of ninety, I think it's eighty.
One thousand nine hundred and nineteen dollars and fifty-seven cents.
Yes.
So, what's your pleasure, we accept this grant money? Need a motion?
I make a motion to accept money.
We have to work for it, so...
You gotta, you gotta work for it.
Yeah.
I make a motion for you to work for us to accept the grant money.
There you go. Okay, and I, I'm the only one that have to sign this, I get a motion, you get a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any nays or obsessions?
Any questions?
I'll put that in the road.
New board members have for me, or that you can think of right now, or?
That was a nice presentation, and everything was understandable.
You won't see me for another month, so, you can always call or come up to shop, both you guys.
Yeah, we, we know where you are.
You should, yeah, you should come up, actually.
The town ain't so big, you'll be able to...
Yeah, true.
I'd like to come see it and just chat with you, you can teach me a lot, I'm sure.
You can, absolutely.
Okay, thank you, George Marie?
I just, Joe, while you're here, as a citizen, I would like to say thank you. I don't understand nor truly appreciate what goes into keeping a road. But Cedar Hill, you, I mean, you catch it when it first starts.
Oh, that's terrible, right there.
I know, yeah, it's that wetland area, I think, that affects it, but thank you, yeah.
Yeah.
You're on top of things.
Yeah, we have way too many of those beside our roads. All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Joe.
Any other public comments tonight?
Oh, just in general?
Yeah, you got a public comment you wanna make?
Well, I would like to, I sent a letter in to the last meeting, and it wasn't read, and so I sent her an email, I don't know if you guys got a chance to read it, I could read it.
You can read it, or you can get to the point of what you're trying to get across?
Well, I'll try to be quick, I think reading it briefly is probably the best, because that will remember what I'm talking about.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, okay, so, I just said, I was disappointed to not hear the full letter, or maybe even for you guys to hear the full letter in context, because it seemed that, like there was some confusion about what I was asking in the first place. Um, so, when I watched your meeting on YouTube, um, I'd like to address a few of the questions that were raised. This is about the topic of social media, so in this case, Facebook, you made the analogy of it being like chatting at the bar, but it is a platform that's public and discoverable, just like email. And I think we're all learning that Facebook, we're, all of our information is vulnerable on Facebook, so that's just important to keep in mind. Uh, I'm bringing this up because six different people have sent me complaints about the closed Facebook page called Powell Citizens Rights. And these complaints include the bullying tone to other town officials, being removed from the site for disagreeing with the administrator, not being allowed to join the site, and disapproving of the, of our select board members being on this closed, secret site. The reason that this is relevant to the panel select board is that the administrator of this page, Fred Miller, is a town official, he's appointed to the D R B, and from what I understand, is entrusted in joining, joining the planning commission. Uh, and then, our select board members, Bob Jarvis and Ron Bisson, are, have, are also members of Powell Citizens Rights. The administrators of this page, Fred and others, are posting pretty deep discussions that I've seen of town business, particularly the town plan, and clearly, um, are intent on, at least that this has been said, defeating the town plan and obstructing select board meetings. Um, so, I attached two posts that I had recently seen, and as far as I know, over a hundred and fifty people are members who view these postings. So I personally have no problem with Fred asking to be appointed to the planning commission. I actually think this is a good idea, because then we could, we're gonna have to compromise. If we're on the board together, we're gonna work together. But I do object to him simultaneously running a closed Facebook page that is openly undermining the mission of the planning commission. And I think that that's something that's important for you to understand. Um, I'm asking that if you're a town official, whether you're elected or appointed, that if you're gonna post discussions of town business and get public input, which Fred has used at the town plan hearing, um, it should be an open page that anyone can comment on. That's what I'm talking about. This isn't about legality, it's really about board and public official ethics, in my opinion. Um, since this is obviously an issue that's a lot bigger than me and Fred, a town policy could serve as a useful guide going forward. And then I gave the example of Brattleboro's social media policy. So that's my comment, I don't know if anyone else wants to comment on the issue of social media?
I have a comment. I will read mine, so. I attended a select board meeting on April fifth, after being away from work, to check in about the town plan. I woke up the next morning to discover that a select board member had used her social media to publicly shame me for her perception of my behavior at the select board meeting. I attended that meeting in good faith to observe and ask questions. I also work with international companies, I am still on the clock during the time of the select board meeting, so I also discreetly and quietly respond to texts and emails I was receiving during the meeting. Despite my work schedule, I made the effort to come and participate, and I'm actually still at work right now. I was shocked to hear the conversation about social media, especially when spearheaded by a select board member who used social media to reprimand and insult me just this past week. Is this what citizens should expect if they attend a meeting and ask questions or express an opposing viewpoint? That they will be mentioned negatively in a select board's social media post? Also on the select board member's page is a long explanation of the Empower Panel process, in which she mischaracterizes those of us who openly had questions and concerns about it as suspicious, as opposed perhaps highly informed with legitimate concerns. Also, in this letter, she mentions being accused of misappropriating her own website, as if it is a false campaign against her, instead of a natural misunderstanding. The V C R D Empower Panel report claims it as a direct part of the V C R D Business Development Task Force work. With that false information printed on the V C R D website and in the published Empower Panel report, of course, people questioned the P B N site being used for partisan political campaigning. So once again, the dissenting voices are marginalized and assumed publicly to be ignorant at best, instead of listening to and actually evaluating what we are saying. I noticed it happened with Fred Miller's letter as well, in which he included a poll to give an example of what he thought the select board could do in the, to garner a wider variety of opinions about the town plan. He clearly stated in his letter, and also publicly at the meeting, that the polls were not scientific and not indicative of a wide selection of Powell opinion. That was clearly his point, that more citizens' input on the plan could be sought out using a similar poll to his. The results of the poll were not the point, and yet he's being mischaracterized again and again, as if he's trying to use the results of his little Facebook poll to insist that all of Powell has issue with the town plan. He clearly was not. He could have easily said he conducted his polls sitting around a dinner table at a party. The place and the results were not the point. At the last meeting, I asked multiple times what the content of the social media complaint letters were, and they were not read. Since then, a select board member has published them on social media. As for Ms. Barsati's letter, she says she asked her twelve-year-old daughter to not talk about others in a secretive and demeaning way on social media, and asks that our town board members do the same. The statement is confusing, because Ms. Barsati, right before the election, slandered Ron Bisson on Ms. Face, on Ms. Dewar's Facebook page. All this appears to be a coordinated effort to shame and silence those who have an opposing or dissenting voice. This was the original reason and need for creating Powell Citizens Rights a year ago. The intent of the group is, and always has been, to make a place for politically like-minded people to discuss, discuss the goings-on in town and the state without fear of retribution, insult, or retaliation. Most of what has been talked about recently is Second Amendment issues. The only thing that gets you removed from the page is sharing its private content, as clearly stated in the rules. Through Powell Citizens Rights, many residents have finally felt free to express their opinions, and it has spurred them to involvement and action in a way that they've never had before. Both select board members have left the group to avoid controversy and to protect Powell's citizens' rights from a group of people who obviously have a serious problem with people exercising their free speech without their approval. This town has bigger problems than what people post in an online group. People talk, whether it be at the bar, around a dinner table, at the grocery store, or at a Facebook page. Unless what is being said arises to the level, making physical threats to others, or going against open meeting laws, it falls under the umbrella of free speech and should not be policed by non-constitutional social media policies. And Fred Miller is not the administrator of the group.
Okay, okay, thank you both for reading to us what you, what you read. I made a comment last time about the, what I thought about Facebook, and I still think the same, and you actually ended up that thing, the last paragraph saying something similar to what I said. It's a conversation between people, and they have a right to say what they wish to say between each other. If people find a defense, then turn it off. Some people don't watch Fox News, others do, some watch CNN, others don't. The bottom line is, we don't tell those news people that they can't do what they're saying on their channels, and I'm not for one that's gonna tell people what they can say on Facebook, especially when they're already testifying in front of the U S Congress about what Facebook is and where it's gonna go. I think the world is understanding and beginning to grasp what social media really means, and until they become social, and how to communicate that way, you're gonna hear the things that you hear, you're gonna hear the things you hear, and so won't we probably send some stuff on a Facebook page, 'cause I have a Facebook page, that you might not like, but that's my right.
And I think everybody in this town does wanna work for a better town. And I, and I do think we have to try to put things behind us and work on stuff, but, you know, there was, there was a name...
I'm, I'm gonna stop you, because here's my thing.
Yeah.
You have to put it in the perspective it is, from your mind, and you need to quit thinking of things as being negative or bad. People are gonna say things, you know, we sit here on this board, God, I've sat here long enough, and even me and Ron has gone at words at times, but we know enough that we look at what was said, and we, and we work it out. We don't go after each other, you know...
I just wanted to say something, though, that, to explain a major difference. I'm, I'm glad that you brought up Empower Panel, because I think that there's a lot of similarity between groups. I mean, there's, it's like community organizing. But just think about, if during that process, when you had your questions, I had created a closed Facebook group that was members-only, and that if anyone disagreed with me, I kicked them off.
It's not disagreeing with us, it's, it's, if they screenshot and share.
I'm gonna stop this, I'm gonna stop, I'm gonna stop this, because we're not here, we're not, that's not our body of function to work, okay? If you guys wish to talk about that outside, go ahead and talk about it, how you wanna do it, but we, as a board, unless this board thinks differently, are not going to spend a lot of time on what people say on Facebook, or so forth, we do have a lot to do.
And I realize that. I guess my concern, I, I don't do, I mean, I have a Facebook page, but I go on it once, once a year.
You're like me.
And I don't, I don't look at it, but I think, for me, the concern is the, the tone of some of the conversations that I've, I've heard about, but that, people have that free speech. My concern is, I think it would be appropriate, um, my experience from being a teacher, when technology entered the classroom, we preempted problems by setting up a, uh, sort of procedures and, and, uh, you know, things that were guidelines for students, so that we avoided some of the things.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna...
Okay, I'm, I think it's important that this board sets up some protocols so that you're not getting people talking about the town business out of open meetings.
I think if anybody out there wishes to talk about town business, they should be able to do that.
Okay.
If three of these members sit somewhere and have a discussion about it, that could take action, that's not allowed.
Okay.
Okay, two people can sit down at the dinner table that are select board and discuss all they want, but they can't make a decision unless they get one other person to vote when they come. That's all allowed, I'm, and I, and, and we're not, we're not in the situation where the school is, where we can say to all the public out there, this is our rule.
No, no, I'm just saying, for members of the board, I think it needs to be very clear that you can't have a three-way conversation, or you, you know, what are the limits, what are, because...
We passed out when this board, even when the new members came, what it means to take and have a meeting, and so forth, because there's a public, what's the term I'm looking for, that they handed out to us for meetings, that we have to go by?
The open meeting law.
Open meeting laws, is what I was looking for, and you have to go by those.
Yes.
If you don't, we... If you don't, we can be cited. Uh, we can be brought up by the Secretary of State. There's, there's a whole bunch of stuff that can happen if we conduct ourselves in the wrong manner. But you know what? I don't think the state has gone to legislation yet to do anything about Facebook or any of those social medias. So, and I don't think, we're ready to do that either, because simply, I don't, I, I just think it's discussions right now. And I, I, I like the fact you're having discussions and that you're arguing a little bit about what one says and the other says. I think that is what we want to hear out there. So we get some feedback, and we shouldn't be policing people and telling them they can't do this and can't do that on either side. What we want to do is hear more about the media, what that issue was versus, Joe Smol did this and John Smith did that. No. What was the comment about? What, what were the points that they were trying to make? That's what helps us when we look at this town plan and stuff, not the fact that, oh, two people on social media, they're, they're doing things they shouldn't do. I want to know more about what you're talking about. You know, if you're talking about the town plan, let's do that.
Apparently, you gotta raise your hand. So, I guess, I gotta say, I took exception to some of the things that were in your second letter. And just to let you know, the, I did leave the group before this came out, early Monday morning I left, because I didn't want, I didn't want anyone on PCR thinking that they can't, they can't communicate freely, and then somehow the wrath of government is gonna come down on them in a closed site. This is just, but what I take exception, and, and I'll start with what I agree with. We really should have read your letter last week. If you look back to my concerns about Empower Pownell, what brought me into here was the fact that my letter wasn't read, but the response was. And that put me, I sat right there and read the letter in the next meeting. So I agree totally that that should have been read. But I really take great exception to how you're characterizing Fred and his comments. To, to, to characterize any dissent on the town plan as undermining the mission of the Planning Commission is just not true. Whether you're elected, appointed, or a citizen, you have every right to voice your dissent on the town plan, wherever you are. Um, for my part, what I did was I was dumb enough to leave the site before taking my screenshots. So I had somebody on the site send me everything that I've posted, which is almost nothing, uh, to that site since, since announcing my candidacy. And there's almost nothing there, but I'm perfectly willing to share it with anybody who wants to see it. There is few people in town that have done more work, given more rewrites, given more input, and have gotten more people involved in their town government than Fred Miller. And I really, really, I, I really take great exception to the way he's characterized here. And, and, and I mean, all the way to the point of saying that he's plotting to, 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 what was it, undermine? No, plotting to disrupt select board meetings, which is just not true. If you want to read this, I'll read it. It might be a little spirited, and just because something's a little spirited doesn't make it not legitimate. This is, I.
I don't think you could characterize some of his language really insulting Jenny and others as just spirited. It's bullying.
It, it's not bullying. I've heard that so many times. And, and, you know, those of us who have heard about Empower Pownell feel bullied too.
Well, I'm gonna bully. I'm gonna bully.
Now I feel even more bullied.
Now I'm gonna bully. The bottom line is, is that I think we've discussed this enough. If people wish to communicate, go ahead and communicate. I, I'm not gonna, unless this board wants to do something different, then speak up and let's do it. And if you don't, I'm, I'm gonna put this to rest. People do what they want on Facebook.
I will repeat what I said last week. Everything I write is public. I am not disparaging of citizens. I was very distracted by your texting and giggling throughout the meeting last week. I don't recall writing anything about that on Facebook, but I found it really disruptive.
You did write on Facebook.
Oh, maybe I did.
You said I was snickering.
You were.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm talking to people I don't work with.
Excuse me, does she need to raise her hand to speak?
Yes.
Thank you. So let me finish speaking. I felt very disrespected. You sat and glared at me. You were texting and giggling the entire time, and you're smirking at me now. So I wrote about it, and I'm unapologetic for that.
That's fine.
And I will not disparage citizens for no reason.
It's, it's, it's over as far as I'm concerned.
I'd like to make a comment on the social media stuff.
I know you're a big user.
That's right. I am a big user. Matter of fact, I'm a bigger user now. Because it really irritates me to see how this is getting out of hand. I did not join any groups. I wound up in that group. I don't know how I got there. And I got thrown out. I don't know how that happened. And I don't care. I never posted anything. This is the point I'm trying to stress. Whenever I look at that Facebook, I look at that for a little bit of, it's like watching a comedy show. There's stuff on there that makes no sense. It doesn't, and I don't care what people say.
That's it.
The only thing I, I don't like about Facebook is they allow a lot of swearing, things like that. You ought to at least be able to talk without swearing and that other stuff. But as far as disparaging people, what are we anyway? A bunch of snowflakes? Come on, folks. Just somebody can't, I can't tell you, jeez, I don't like you. Cut that beard off, you hairy son of a bitch. I can't do that. Sure I can.
Never got swear.
He may not be on my ass, but still, I don't know. That's, that's how, how that is. That's nothing.
It's, it's communication.
If we're gonna get, this is one thing I don't like as far as media goes. I don't like these cell phones. Everybody's got them. They're texting right during a meeting. I think there should be a basket. Put that cellphone in a basket when you come into a meeting.
I agree with that.
If you need help from somewhere else, same thing with a computer. Sorry, Jenny, I just don't think you need that at the meeting. If you want to bring something in and show us after, after everything is said and done.
That's all it's there for, Ron, and not using it during the meeting. It's there to show stuff. It's there to show the newsletter, but I haven't, I'm not using it.
I'm not a fan of that kind of stuff, but I still believe, and it's going through Congress, just look at, they're taking all our rights away now. They don't want me to have a gun or anything else. I mean, crying out loud. And here, they, they want us to police what's on the social media. The government's got it full of propaganda and everything else. We're supposed to listen to that, all the, this stuff they put out. This is people talking. I think it gets some good ideas out, and it gets people interested in their town, not just 12 or 10 or 15 people. You got, maybe you got 50 or 100 in a com, we've had better town meetings, the last couple of them, because of discussion. Not because we all sat back and we all sat here at this table and said, yeah, yeah, I make a motion, I think, okay, everything is fine. There has to be, somebody has to, you gotta think for yourself. And I'm thinking, that's what that is. You're thinking for yourself, and as long as you're not calling anybody names or anything else, you know, it's, it's, it's all right, as far as I'm concerned.
Yep.
Man, over there, watch this feed.
Thank you.
Say, state who you are.
Uh, my name is Gerald Petrazella, and I'm up on Carver Hill Road. And I only want to say this. I work in technology, um, and, and I, I have also taught ethics. Um, and this issue here and this coming up i-in town is really interesting to me, and I'm really glad that, that people are thinking about these things, because it is, you know, more and more, we're gonna have to be thinking about how we want to deal with these issues. Um, it's not going away, unfortunately or fortunately, I suppose. So I think, you know, absolutely, citizens should be, should have that freedom, right, to disagree spiritedly and all the rest of it. Um, I think so long as our elected officials sort of keep themselves to a higher standard, then that's all, you know, we can ask for.
I can agree with that.
I agree with that, too.
All right.
A question, please. It's not related to this. So does this board have, I'm Chris Barsati, Elavon Rosenrath. Um, does this board have a conflict of interest policy?
Sorry, does it have a what?
Conflict of interest.
Policy for his member.
I don't remember if it was created in a.
We had, we talked about it a couple of times, but I don't think we said anything down there.
I think there are, I've read that there are some at the BLCT, that there's a conflict of interest as lo, as well as the open meeting law, and those two things kind of work in conjunction.
The board has adopted, not this particular board, but the board does have a conflict of interest policy, I believe, that was adopted around 2014 or 15.
Do you know where citizens can find that?
I could get that for you.
Okay, I mean, it's available on the town website.
We can put it there.
Oh, we could put it there. There is a conflict of interest policy.
Could you describe for me some of the safeguards that we, citizens, have against board members self-enriching themselves with their position?
Excuse me, what was that?
So can you tell me what safeguards are in existence based on that policy that says conflict of interest? That we know as citizens that people on the board are not using their position for self, self-enrichment.
I believe it does make reference to a section on that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we'll put it up on the website, and then you'll see what it is.
Can we also all receive a copy of it, because I'm unaware of it?
Sure.
There, there's actually a number of policies that were put out a while ago.
I bet. I got something I can forward. I did ask the Secretary of State about some of the conflict of interest and open meeting laws, and I got a response from her. And it's kind of a canned response, and I think it speaks directly to what you're asking.
Can you share that with all of us?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, it'll be interesting to see how it compares to what our conflict of interest policy is. All right. Anything else? Nothing? Good. Okay, moving on. Hiring committee update.
It's going really well. Um, we had a great meeting. I passed out the minutes. I just need to confer with Bob about what we're, we can talk about.
We just can't talk about the.
We just can't say names.
Right, we can't say names or.
So we have narrowed it down from 22 to 10, and we'll start interviews a week from Saturday. Um, Sue Karaman has been setting up the interviews, and I believe she's reached nine of the 10. Is that right?
Uh, I may have missed an email. She had seven, and then, no, I'm sorry, there were seven on that Saturday, so there is nine, because the other two were on the, on the following day.
So we, we have nine scheduled interviews.
Out of the 10.
Yeah. So, um, we are all set to do that. We're gonna be doing it at Bennington College in one of her conference rooms. The board was unanimous, or the, the committee was unanimous in doing it in Bennington versus Pownell. Um, they have all of the technology we need, so, um, it sounds like a great place to do it. Um, we're gonna bang them all out, most of them out in one day with a lunch break. Anything else we think, do you think we need to say about it?
Um, nothing. We're gonna schedule a sort of a, a dry run, which I don't think we scheduled yet, just to make sure that our, our side of the technology works, and we can connect, and we can project and all that stuff. Um, we still have to schedule that, but it's a week from Saturday, right?
Week of Saturday. Mm-hmm. But, um, yeah, it's, we're all getting along really well, and, um, it's a really, I think it's a really good committee. Um, I think I said that last week, but.
Okay.
Um, yeah, that's all, that's what I've got for that. And then I put in the travel for interview discussion, that, but that's really gonna depend on if anyone needs, if we need a budget for travel for the people we refer to the board, so that's, we don't need to travel anyone here. Um, did I put in benefits discussion? Did you put in benefits discussion?
Um, I did not. So if it's there, it must have come from you. We did want to, uh, I'm not sure what the benefits discussion is, is about. I don't remember. We, I think we skipped the travel for the interview discussion because.
Yeah, I think it's too early to do a benefits discussion.
We're gonna make the recommendation, and then the select board, us, we'll decide who, who, who to travel, who to bring in and all that stuff.
So it's just basically just putting it out there for, for thought, that we're gonna have to have a budget conversation?
Okay.
That's, we're good, right?
I can't think of anything else. I think that was everything. We had a pretty short meeting last time, and it went pretty smoothly.
Yeah, okay, great.
Newsletter.
Um, so the newsletter's gonna launch. Um, I have to go back to the newsletter when we talk about the new business. Um, one of the things with the newsletter is that, um, I'm gonna change the header photograph every week. I'm saying this to the camera, because what I'd like people to do is submit photographs, and they'll submit them to me, and then I'm just gonna number them, and we'll have a blind drawing right before the select board meeting or during it, and, um, we'll post a photograph from a town member uh, at the top, and you won't know until the newsletter comes out, so you'll have to look at it to see if your picture got up there. Um, I'm also highlighting members of the town that are, um, sitting in elected or appointed positions, and little bios to introduce town to the people that are running it. Um, I'm doing a little section on news from town members, so if you have news to share, um, send it my way. You can send it by Facebook, or you can send it to my email. Um, you'll see what that news is tomorrow if you sign up. You can go to the website, and on the homepage is a sign-up button, and then it takes you to a very quick sign-up. You just say your name and your email address and put in a little code. Um, and that's about it. Oh, I'm highlighting a, a town business in every newsletter, so that's it.
Okay, so one of the things you're gonna highlight, I'm moving on.
Yes.
Is that on April 18th, next Wednesday at 6:30, we're meeting here to discuss the town plan and some of the changes we're doing, so people know. And then we'll also have a meeting on the town plan on May 2nd. But next week's a work session that, uh, we're gonna go over a bunch of stuff that some of the select board members have thought of for changes and what citizens have given us for changes. So, if you're interested, here's 6:30, next Wednesday.
Oh, 6:30.
Okay. With that, I don't have anything else on the schedule.
I have a question under old business. Um, Linda, our municipal ordinance, where are we with that, with the Sheriff's Department?
I'll have to follow up. Chad still had it.
Okay.
Anything else?
Oh, the new business? I know you mentioned it.
Yeah, we're, we're rescheduled the, the meeting next week.
I just wanted to check on that. Are we extending the deadline for people to submit their names?
They can submit their names right up until that night.
Okay, because there was somewhere it was posted that they had to have their names in by April 1st.
Well, if the web changes, because it's really.
I don't know if that's on the website. I don't know where that was. I don't remember where I saw it.
They can have their names in right up to the 19th.
Okay, great. So you can put your names in up till the 19th?
Seven o'clock, we'll be making decisions, so be there before seven.
Great.
Anything else? Take motion adjourned.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all for coming.